Okay, we are returning from closed session at 7:06. And are there any action items out of session?
There is. I'll make a motion to approve new hires as presented by the superintendent.
Motion made by Ms. Hubbard, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chavez. Any discussion? All in favor? And then opposed, so motion passes. Zero.
Right, and then, whoops. So the next motion I have is a consideration and approval of new positions for the 2020-2021 school year.
I'm sorry, did you make that motion?
Very clumsily, I did. I'll make that motion.
Okay, a motion made by Ms. Hubbard, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Batwell, and any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Sorry, the motion wasn't in that one. And then I have another one, just a second. And there's nothing for 3C, it's 3D, is that correct?
3D, right.
Okay. Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the probationary interim administrative contracts as presented by the superintendent.
Okay, a motion made by Ms. Hubbard, your second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Padilla, and any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
And then, I'll make a motion to approve the new positions for the ninth grade center 2021-2022 school year as presented by the superintendent.
Motion made by Ms. Hubbard, second?
A second.
Second by this charter.
I don't normally second, that's why.
Yeah. Okay, any discussion? And all in favor? Motion passes.
Right, that is everything for me.
Okay. So, let's stand up for the Pudge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. I tell you, just to the side of the United States of America. And if you feel led, remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Stay standing for our reciting of our mission and vision statement. So the missions, or let's see, the vision statement says, Hado, ISP, fires your choice in education through innovation, leadership, and diversity. And our mission statement, Hippo Nation inspires excellence in academics, character, and community. Alright, thank you. And first up, we have the recognitions.
Okay, Dr. Sermani is going to help us. So as Dr. Sermani gets the presentation up and going for our Hippos of the Month, want to welcome all of our students and our parents to our board meeting here tonight. We want to congratulate you on the honor that's coming to your parent, I mean, to your students tonight. And as we just recited, our mission is that we inspire excellence in academics, character, and community. As the principals describe the children tonight, or talk about their qualities, listen for those qualities in our mission statement, and those elements of excellence in academics and character and community. So congratulations, parents, and congratulations to our students as well. And I think we're having a bit of technical difficulty, so we'll be right there.
It's not giving me that option. logged in on one screen. I mean, it's the same. Let me see if I can share it. amongst yourselves.
We could talk about this, your headshot that is being recorded for the meeting.
He's getting that up tonight, representing Hado High School tonight. We have the associate principal, Mr. Burns, because Mr. Christian is in New Braunfels with our basketball team. They advanced to another round of the playoffs, so they are playing tonight, so we should send them good karma at the game.
Show the game.
Yeah. I was at the game on Tuesday night when we played Lake Travis, so really proud of beating them. Mr. Burns, who are we playing tonight?
San Antonio Clark.
Oh.
San Antonio Clark, the game will start here in just a little, but I'll try to get you some updates in a little bit.
Okay, that'll be great.
Our Cougars.
So what is the technical difficulty we're having?
Because for some reason, it's not letting me make Robert a co-host like I normally do.
So he can share this, there we go.
So I'm
You're doing it.
So I'm now doing that, and watch for new people.
Alright, I think we're ready to get started with our first celebration. Ms. Linda Pachicano, are you on?
Hi, good evening, everyone. This is Ms. Pachicano, principal at Cottonwood Creek Elementary at the legendary Cottonwood Creek Elementary. And I am really excited to introduce you guys to a second grader that has really exemplified two of our character traits when we talk about excellence in character and community. And Ms. Jeter, I see you there, and Gabriel, welcome this evening. I want to share all of the great things that I've learned about Gabriel and some of the things that I was able to catch him in action doing recently at our campus. When I, Gabriel's a second grader, he was nominated by Ms. Bab. Ms. Lacy Bab is his second grade teacher. And we know that during the COVID periods, one of the things that we constantly talk to kids about is the sanitation piece, making sure that we're keeping ours clean, making sure that we're sanitizing our hands, and you know, and not only that, but we're keeping our school beautiful. And one day, when I was walking the halls, Gabriel had left the restroom area and was already washing his hands, and he did, he did the process and the procedures exactly the way he knows to do those, and washed his hands, took a paper towel, and was able to dry his hands, but as he was walking by, it just so happened that I was turning the corner, he didn't see me coming at all, and Gabriel noticed that there was quite a few trash, just litter around the trash can where some of the trash didn't make it in there, especially paper towels. And it warmed my heart because I stopped and I kind of watched, and Gabriel did the right thing, he exemplified his character and helped our community at the campus by stopping and taking a few extra minutes to pick up all of the trash that he saw. And of course, I jumped right in and pitched in, and we had a little conversation about what the hippo way is, and talking about how he exemplified those character traits. He was nominated not only for that reason, but also when I came and I talked to his teacher, and we spotlighted him and bragged about him in his classroom. We also learned, Ms. Bab said, Ms. Pachicano, Gabriel is just like that. Anytime that he can help anyone else in this class, he has a servant heart, and he's a leader because he's a role model to others. And so I wanted to introduce you to this wonderful young man. I know that he's going to really continue to exemplify that hippo way for us, and he represents Hippo Nation in a wonderful way. Thank you, Gabriel, for everything that you do, and thank you for representing Cottonwood Creek Elementary. Have a wonderful evening, and nice to see you this evening as well.
Go, Gabriel, thank you, Ms. Pachicano. Okay, in from Hado Elementary School, Ms. Rosser, are you on?
Yes, ma'am, good evening, all. And I get the privilege of honoring Ava Young, a fifth grade student. Ava, I thought I saw your mom's name, are you out there? I'm hoping that she's on, I know her in our
Yes.
Oh, good, there she is. Hi, Ava. Is a fifth grade student at Hado Elementary and is a member of our student council, and she was nominated by the fifth grade team for her outstanding leadership skills. This picture that you see on your screen is from a couple of weeks ago. Ava helped out with our character ed ceremonies in the classroom. We had one of our student council members dress up as Hope Hippo, and Ava volunteered to walk around with her. I don't know how many of you have ever put a hippo head on, but it's very hard to see out of those things, so Ava was incredibly helpful, not only to Hope Hippo, but to me that day as we honored our character ed award recipient. Additionally, her teacher, Ms. Robinson, wrote that she constantly keeps them and her fellow classmates organized. She reminds teachers of things going on in the classroom, informs students of due dates, and helps her peers with challenging assignments. Anytime she's placed in a group in the classroom, she leads without skipping a beat and does so with grace, and ensures that no student in her group, or actually in the classroom, is left behind. And Ms. Robinson also said that anytime we have a guest educator in the fifth grade hallway, there is always a note left about Ava and how helpful she was at how things are done in the classroom and where everything is. And Ava, Ms. Robinson, actually said that you could probably run the classroom by yourself on most days. So if you decide to be a teacher one day, come back to Hippo Nation. I love hiring former teachers, I mean, former students. Alright, and that is all of the wonderful things about Ava. Ms. Robinson said they couldn't possibly list everything that makes this young lady outstanding. Congratulations to you, Ava, we're super proud, and I can't wait to hear about all the future accomplishments you will have.
Thank you.
Way to go, Ms. Ava, thank you, Ms. Rosser. Up next, Howard Norman Elementary, Mrs. Abrams.
Good evening, everybody. I hope that you're having a warmer evening than last week. And I am so excited to celebrate Colton Kidderman. I saw him sitting and ready to go. He is one of our second grade virtual learners. Since the beginning of the year, he has been online learning, and many of our students are thriving during this online learning. It makes me wonder what careers they're going to have one day. And Colton is a student that does all the amazing things of our leader in me habits, but one of the things that stood out to us about Colton is that with online learning, you got to have a sense of humor sometimes. And Colton, Ms. Moreau says, you bring that sense of humor, you roll with the punches when things aren't going your way, and the work that you turn in is amazing. Ms. Moreau calls me down regularly, just shows me pictures and says, you will not believe what Colton just did. The picture you're looking at is Colton, once again, taking one of his tasks. I believe this one is learning about plants, and constructed his own. He's also taken, they do recipe writing, and then he goes home, and, well, he's already at home, and he makes the recipe. They talk about timelines, he's got a timeline hanging up on his wall. They talk about sound energy, and he does an entire science fair project on sound energy. So, Colton, we're just so proud of you, and we wanted to make sure to recognize all the amazing work that you're doing this year. I'm so happy that you're at Howard Norman, and you are definitely a great leader at our campus. Colton, do you want to say hi to everyone?
Hi.
That's fantastic, congratulations, Colton, way to go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Abrams. Up next, from Doc Curly Elementary School, Mrs. Ruggerello.
Good evening, everybody, can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, we can, wonderful.
We are here to honor CJ Honeycutt, and I think they're out there, I saw the name on the screen, so welcome to the Honeycutt family. And we are honoring CJ, he is a kindergartner this year, and he is an in-person student, but just recently, he was nominated by our counselor, Carla Salazar, because she walked a new student down to CJ's classroom. And this is a student who's been virtual all year, but just recently joined the class, and the student was a little bit hesitant to go in, you know, as anyone new to school would be. And CJ literally walked up to him and said, I got you. And he was a great friend to this new student, and showed him the way of the classroom, helped him with his first assignment, said I can show you around, and really just showed that hippo way of courtesy and kindness. All of those character traits about welcoming and being a good friend. And he took this other student under his wing and was just such a positive influence on the student that was having a hard time transitioning to school for the very first time ever. And we just wanted to honor CJ for that, because nobody asked him to be a helper to the student. He did it on his own, and he knew that he could reach out and be a friend, and we are so proud of you, CJ, and we are so happy that you are at Curly Elementary. So welcome, you can say hi if you're out there, congratulations.
Hi.
Hello, Honeycutt family. We're very proud of you.
Awesome, thank you, Mrs. Ruggerello. Alright, and from Nadine Johnson Element entry, Mrs. Rieckel, are you on?
I am, and I can see my dear sweet friend, Aretezi's big smile. I know who she is, Aretezi, can you please wave and say hello so they know who you are? There she is, her sweet face. Aretezi was nominated because she shows the hippo way in all she does. She was, her teacher says that she gives 100% in her schoolwork, and I know that Ms. Gonzalez is here also, listening, and so proud of you, Aretezi. She volunteers to help others understand directions and assignments, but also knows when she needs help and always has the courage to ask for help, which is awesome. She has really shown grit this year, and I think this is the year of having grit. And she began the year as a virtual learner. When schools opened, she was face-to-face, and then she was kind enough to transfer classes in January because we needed to build a new second grade face-to-face class. And Aretezi was super flexible and was chosen as somebody that would thrive and blossom in any setting that she was in. So, so proud of her and thankful for her willingness to do that. She joined the class with a big smile and the determination to grow. She shows patience and kindness to others and has great ideas to fill the class discussion. Way to go, Aretezi, we're really proud of you.
Yay, Miss Aretezi. What a pretty name, way to go. Thank you, Mrs. Rieckel.
Welcome.
Alright, now from Ray Elementary, Mrs. Campbell.
Hello, everyone, I am Mrs. Campbell, principal of Ray Elementary. Edward, how are you today? Hello, Edward.
Hey, there he is.
So Edward has been a virtual student all year. And Mr. Edward Barber is an exceptional student. His teacher is Mrs. Gonzalez, and Mrs. Garcia nominated him for our Hippo of the Month. He has shown great tenacity in keeping up with all of his virtual learning expectations on a daily basis. He is present at all of his class meets and can always be counted on to actively participate in all of his virtual classes, which by the way, he's in the dual language program. So Edward has done an awesome job in keeping up with all of his Google assignments, and congratulations on meeting the challenge of virtual learning head-on and being such an exemplary student. Congratulations, Edward.
Yay, way to go, Edward. Awesome, thank you, Mrs. Campbell. And now from Veteran's Hill, Mrs. Patero.
Hi, good evening. It is my pleasure to recognize Ariel Baez. Good evening, Ariel, Imam Cristal. And I want to share what Mrs. Riley, Ariel's dual language pre-K teacher says about her. She said that Ariel is receiving the Hippo of the Month award because she always demonstrates the hippo way by being respectful, responsible, and safe each day. Ariel is respectful to all teachers and staff at school and to her classmates. She is fair and waits patiently for her turn and treats everyone as a friend. She is always on track and completes her tasks without having to be reminded. Ariel takes special care of materials and takes initiative by putting things where they belong, as well as helping friends in class put things away that they may have forgotten. She takes pride in her work and loves to show her artwork to her teachers and friends. And you can't see it in this picture, but the day that this picture was taken, Ariel had some shaving cream on her hands because she had been doing a fun activity in pre-K, so she loves her art projects. Congratulations, Ariel. Want to say hi?
Hi.
Hello, great job, sweetie.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Patero. It's very cute. Alright, now we move on to the secondary schools. From Hado Middle School, Mr. McCullough.
Hi, everyone, my name is Jason McCullough, and I'm the proud principal of Hado Middle School. And our Hippo of the Month this month is Ms. Delilah Bice. I see that Ms. Bice is out there, would you like to say hello, Ms. Bice? Thank you. So Ms. Bice is a seventh grade student on our campus, and she was nominated by all of her teachers. Her teachers say that she is a joy to have in their classrooms. She's a hard worker, she makes great grades, and one of the first students to offer assistance when needed, no matter what the task is. Our teachers also say that Delilah brings positivity and kindness daily, even when no one is watching. One example of this is from Ms. McNulty, who found out that Delilah had been writing positive messages on post-it notes and then sticking those messages on the mirrors in the girls' restrooms. Messages like, you look good, you're amazing, and you're unique in your own way. These small gestures go a long way to help increase the positive self-image and positive self-talk that a lot of our middle school students sometimes struggle with. Ms. Bice, I can't think of anyone more deserving of our Hippo of the Month award. So thank you for all that you do, and congratulations on your well-deserved recognition.
There you go, Delilah, congratulations. Awesome, thank you, Mr. McCullough. Right, from Farley Middle School, Mr. Willoughby.
Good evening, board, good evening, everyone. I have the opportunity to recognize Ms. Bailey Dearman. Ms. Dearman is an eighth grade student in our campus, and I know she's not with us right now because she's in Liberty Hill competing at the track meet. When I asked about a student to be recognized, instantly, the eighth grade team nominated Ms. Dearman. She's one of the most responsible, hard-working students that they've ever met. She's positive, she's modest, and she's an absolute role model for her peers. Bailey started the year and was a virtual learner for an extended period of time. And her, she demonstrated her work ethic through her consistent communication with teachers, seamless transitions on assignments, and best effort in doing the best that she can in that environment. She recently came back to campus, and it has been a seamless transition. She communicates positively with her peers and her teachers, and she models integrity in her actions. I went to go visit with Ms. Dearman to talk to her about her recognition, and I told her to come visit with me at the end of the athletics period, and bless her heart, she thought she was in trouble. Conversation with her, she said, I've never been called to the principal's office before except one time when I was at Ray. And I said, well, what'd you get called for? She says, well, I was nominated for Hippo of the Month. Two for two, being called to the principal's office to be recognized as Hippo of the Month. She's going to be an outstanding leader in our community, in our school district, and at the high school. She does a fantastic job, I'm super proud of her, and very proud that she makes our campus a great place to be. So I know she's not there, but we congratulate Bailey Dearman as the FMS Hippo of the Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willoughby. Alright, and from River Horse Academy, Mr. McConaughey.
Somebody's got to say it.
Oh, you're on mute?
Mr. McConaughey, are you out there?
There should be an alphabet test on that, shouldn't it?
Yeah, it is.
My first name.
Sitting under there is a druid carry.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to have to, let's skip, I'll try to text him.
Okay, Ms. Courtney Tuttle, if you're out there, just hang tight, we're going to come right back around to you. Alright, so let's move on to Hado High School. Mr. Christian, not Mr. Christian, Mr. Burns, would you do the honors today, please?
I'd be more than happy to, good evening, everybody. I saw Piper out there just a few minutes ago. We are proud to announce that our student of the month at Hado High School is one of our seniors, Piper Chang. I'm going to talk a little bit about the reason we nominated her through our theater department. Ms. Fulton said that Piper joined the Theater Arts Department of Hado High School back in 2019. Back then, she first auditioned for the Music Man. Really impressed Ms. Fulton and Mr. Oxley at that time with her remarkable soprano voice. She joined the thespian troupe since then, has been a real dedicated member of the cast of one-act play as well. She did competition with one-act play as well, some class productions and projects. Just this past November, she competed at the State Thespian Festival. While she was there, she received a superior rating, advanced to the International Thespian Competition that's going to be held in June. So we're all excited about that for Piper. She's always a positive voice, according to Ms. Fulton, she's just the most positive voice out there in their troupe. She continues to engage, you know, the new kids that are coming in, all those older kids as well, she's just a leader there in the department. She's a great leader on our campus, she's well-loved. We announced this to our staff yesterday who our student of the month was, and you should have heard the staff with their applause and cheers for Piper because they love her so much. So Piper, I saw you out there a few minutes ago, please say hello. Congratulations, because we're extremely proud to have you as our student of the month.
Alright, way to go. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, let's bring Courtney back. Okay, Ms. Courtney Tuttle, are you out there?
Yes, I have, I'm going to share it with you real quick.
Okay. No, we're going to, we're going to, we have her accolade.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. Okay, Ms. Courtney Tuttle, congratulations on your recognition this evening. I apologize for Mr. McConaughey, something must be, we're going to find out what's happened because he's usually really good about being here, we hope he's okay. But this spotlight right now is for you, and I want to read to you what he submitted as your accolade this afternoon. Courtney is our leading student at River Horse Academy who sets the standard of performance for all other students. Since joining RHA in September, Since joining RHA in September, Courtney has completed more than two years' worth of credits on her path to graduate early. In addition to her performance, she leads by sitting on the Student Advisory Council, providing quality input for campus improvement. Courtney exhibits excellence in all that she does as a student and is showing her peers how she makes excellence her habit. So congratulations, Courtney. We're really proud of you, and we hope to see great things from you in the future. Way to go.
Okay, he's getting on as soon as he can, so he'll pop on here in a sec.
Okay.
Keep going, and then he'll pop on.
All right. Let's move on to our Teacher of the Month. And once again, from Hutto High School, Mr. Burns, do us the honors.
I'm really excited about this one. I get to work with our Teacher of the Month on a regular basis. She teaches our honors biology courses at the high school. It's Ms. Jessica Schwertfeger. Saw her out there with some of her crew just a few minutes ago. I'll let them say hello here in just a second. There are a lot of reasons that she was nominated for this, but something that really stood out recently that we need to make sure we mention, during our shutdown, Ms. Schwertfeger communicated regularly with her students to provide support while they were at home during the freeze. Going to read a few of those messages from the parents of our students that they sent to us last week as this freeze was wrapping up and the power was coming back. The first parent, "I just wanted to share some things with you about this amazing teacher, Coach Schwertfeger from HHS. Not only has checked on all of her students, but she's been keeping up to date with them about all their needs. She's checking on how her students are doing every day, and you can tell it's important to her. Teachers like Coach S, that's what makes my son do better. And people like her believe in our kids, show them how there's always somebody that cares. Thanks, Coach S, for always caring about every single student. The morning message every day to let your students know you care makes a huge difference. God bless you every day, every minute." Fantastic message. And then after we got that, we got another message about Coach Schwertfeger. Parent says, "I'm in your band app because my grandson is in your class. You helped him get back on track, and your messages have not only inspired him, but they've also inspired me. In the midst of everything that has been going on, winter storm, electricity limited or out, water limited or out, you have a baby at home, yet you continually encourage your students on a regular basis to let them know that they're loved and cared for, and someone is there for them. You also provided resources for them in case they can take advantage of warming centers, food pantries, et cetera. Thank you for being so extraordinary. It was evident from the first day that I stepped on campus years ago how much Coach Schwertfeger cared for the well-being of our students. Now, the forethought to provide communication to students, those parents, given that much-needed support during a very uncertain time. Ms. Schwertfeger is just consistently a great classroom teacher. Her work during the last week shows that she's definitely there for the whole student, both instructionally and emotionally. We are very proud to have the Teacher of the Month, Ms. Jessica Schwertfeger."
All right. Congratulations. And yes, Mr. Burns, I would agree. That's what stood out to me on that nomination form were all those parents' accolades. So thank you so much, especially right now and during this time. Thank you, Ms. Jessica, for that love and attention. All right, thank you, Mr. Burns. And from Nadine Johnson Elementary School, Mrs. Reichel, would you tell us about Melissa Lake?
Yes, I'm very proud to have Melissa Lake have this honor. Melissa Lake is one of our reading intervention teacher. But she is always there for anybody that needs help, and she is always wanting the best for all of our students and our staff. She's part of my leadership team, my ILT. And not only does she help guide my decisions and offer great advice and suggestions, she's really helped our campus with Alexia software, getting that up and going. And she's really been an advocate and a support in order to have kids do that, which has really helped our students, especially considering they lost a lot of instruction last spring, really do some catch-up work in the area of reading. Along with being an advocate for Alexia, supporting teachers, she troubleshoots for them if they're having trouble with their Alexia accounts. She helps them analyze the data that goes along with Alexia, and she knows all of the resources that go along with that, including the skill builders, to really make it a robust program and not just an additional electronic program, but really make it interactive and really targeting the needs of our students. In addition to that, she saw a need with our high case load for dyslexia. So Mrs. Lake has also taken on some dyslexia groups to help Ms. Milling in the afternoon. She really truly exemplifies what it means to be a team player, assisting in many other ways on our campus, including helping build a positive staff culture. And she also does a great job of assisting during dismissal and arrival at buses. I watched her one day when we did bus dismissal. I was just kind of there in the cafeteria, and I watched her. She is like a well-oiled machine. I thought I could never substitute for her. I can just be like the person that's watching. But she has it all together, is super organized, and that's one of the reasons I love her so much, is because she is so organized and just has everything down to a science. She is a teacher who works hard for our students and wants them to be successful. She also continues her education. She teaches. She's the mother of three. All of our staff just really admire her hard work and determination to really make NGE S successful, and that's really where her heart is, in really helping us be successful and do the best for all of our kids. So we just feel very lucky to have her, and I'm just so excited I get to congratulate her.
All right, Melissa, way to go. Lots of accolades there. Fantastic. Congratulations. Are you on? Can we see you say hello?
Yes, hi, thank you.
Oh, there you are, see? Oh, what a beautiful baby.
Thank you.
Fantastic. All right, and now from Curly Elementary, Mrs. Ruggerello, tell us about Ms. Jane.
All right, so I am honored to present the Support Staff of the Month from Curly, and that is Ms. Jane Maddox-Cody. She is our library aide at Curly, and I know she's out there. So welcome, Jane, congratulations. So when we opened Curly Elementary, I was lucky enough to, shall we say, steal Jane from Hutto High School. I'm sorry, Mr. Burns and Mr. Christian. But her true calling, I think, was to work in a school library. If you've ever walked into the library at Curly, you can see the environment that she has helped to create, and it is so welcoming and loving, and the students love visiting the library. Our staff loves the library. Jane is such a resource for our teachers, always asking what she can do and grab for them. She has just made such a wonderful place and created such a love of books and reading. I didn't even tell Jane this, but the other day, someone said, "I get to go visit the book fairy today." And I said, "Who is it?" And they said, "Ms. Maddox." So your new name is Book Fairy, and I'm okay with that. But not only does she help out in the library, she is such an asset to Curly Elementary. She is the first face that our car rider sees. She is on car duty every morning with her stop sign, and I've never seen Jane without a smile. She is the last person many see because she is the one that releases our school buses at the end of the day, once they've all been loaded. And she is willing to step in and do whatever's needed in any other role whenever I ask her to do so. And she is just such a blessing at Curly. We are so lucky to have her, and I can't say enough great things about Jane. So congratulations, Jane. I know you're out there, and we're so proud of you.
Congratulations, Ms. Jane. Are you there? Can you say hello?
Thank you, yes. I'm so proud to be at Curly. Thank you so much.
Very welcome, very well deserved. I was in your library today, and I saw you in action. So yes, absolutely wonderful with those children. So thank you. Okay, we're ready? All right.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, we have no public comments tonight, so we are going to move on to the report. And we'll start with the Board President Report. This is a time for us to share any committee updates that you guys have been to. So, Lynn Boerst?
Yes, we haven't had any committee meetings for HEF. They moved their annual retreat to March 3rd, so that's happening in about a week.
Be prepared for some planning.
It'll be exciting.
Mr. Padilla?
No report this month. Thank you very much, ma'am.
I will share two things. One, I wanted to just kind of recognize Mr. Reichel, the counselor at HMS. I noticed that he had put something out in social media, letting the community know that he was the counselor for Hutto Middle School during all this ICE craziness, and asking the parents of the students, "Are you all all right?" And I think that that sort of thing really spoke volumes to that school community, that they felt that they were cared for and that people were worried about them, which I think if you go to, you hear stories about that throughout the district. And so it just really touched my heart that during that time, you took the time to do that, to extend care and empathy towards others. As far as community engagement things, so I have been working with the Hutto Resource Center on the Amplify Hutto or Amplify Austin event that will be next week on Friday. And so Amplify Austin, for those of you who are not familiar with it, it's a regional day of fundraising for nonprofits. And so everyone fundraises at the same time, but they also share information about the nonprofits in the community and the work they do to help connect people to different services that they might benefit from. So there will be a lot of information coming out on the Hutto Resource Center's website, but our event will be in two places on next week. Friday, Hippo Cafe for breakfast from 7:30 to 9:00, and then at lunch, we will be at the Stockade Kitchen from 11:30 to 1:00.
Okay.
The ERi Task Force continues to plow through a lot of the material that we're working through, and I'll tell you what, there is just a lot of information that we talk about, a lot of feelings and a lot of suggestions and a lot of information that we are dealing with. So it's a slow process. We continue to move forward, and there are some goals and some achievements that we want to be able to accomplish down the roads, but it's a work in progress. And I was taken, just a thought earlier today, thinking that, you know, this is Black History Month, February, and the kids at Curly Elementary were learning about Rosa Parks Day. And what a great tribute that information and that story was to the kids, because here's a kindergarten and learning about what's right and what's wrong. And being taught at the schools and with some of the virtual kids all relates back to exactly what we're doing with the ERi Task Force. So I applaud the school district for continuing to work through that process, and, you know, we'll have some more to share as we get a little bit further down the line with it.
Yep, thank you. Thanks for taking that committee on.
Sure.
For me, I've been attending a Board Presidents Academy, so we meet weekly and just learn a wealth of information and a lot of things that tie into what we'll talk about from the Governance Core book. So I'll save that for then. But I also wanted to be sure that you guys in your folders, everybody should have gotten this letter from VLK Architects, and just wanted to say thank you to them for school board appreciation, recognition last month. They gave a donation to the Hutto Education Foundation on our behalf, so that was really generous and appreciate that. So that is it.
Okay. My turn, right? Okay, so the superintendent report, I want to start off with quite a few celebrations. The very first one is for our Communications Department. They were awarded a Gold Star Award from TICRA for our district's file that we submitted. I guess it was submitted this year, but we actually put out that biennium report last year. If y'all remember, you should have received it. Every community member should have received it in the mail. So she's attending that conference and speaking. She's going to receive the award on the district's behalf. So just want to extend congratulations to our Communications Department for that award. It's very well deserved. We've got some shout-outs to our community, definitely to Lowe's, who helped us secure 16 pallets of water so that we could open school on Tuesday. Right, so after our maintenance and operations crews were trying to get the plumbing issues under control, then we had the whole water issue and how we're going to get the kids in school. Lowe's, amazingly, you wouldn't think of going to Lowe's to get water, but Henry has made contact with them. Lowe's, they found they were able to secure the water and even donate an additional four pallets and get us that. So we were up and operational, so very thankful to them. I'm sorry, I'm struggling as always. ATB, we got a kudos from Gail over at Little Hippos. Also, they were up and running on Monday. ATB had a limit on milk. They lifted that limit so that we could have enough for our babies going on. So big thank you to ATB. And then we have a special project or a special presentation for you tonight. Mr. Todd, do you want to get that ready? So VLK, as you know, the stadium project is underway. Demolition started on Monday, but even before the ice storm, Todd and his crew and Henry, really, and Coach LaPlante were out there getting an informational video going for our community. Again, started it before the ice storm, and then we had to put a pause on it. They couldn't get it up and ready, even though they were trying to, but of course with no power. We finally just got it today. Todd released it to the community. If you haven't had a chance to see it, we wanted to show it to you tonight. And to everyone out there in TV land who's watching the board meeting, we also wanted to share this really special video that kind of tells the story of the stadium and where it's going. So as people have questions about the demolition and what's happening to their old Hutto stadium, we can share the video with them and share the vision of where we hope to see that building going.
Maybe we'll share it?
Maybe we'll share it.
Just watch it myself.
All right, well, while he's getting that going, I want to really extend a big thank you to Henry Gideon as the Assistant Superintendent for Operations, Brandon Cardwell, our director of construction and facilities, the entire operations team, our cafeteria staff. They started working, they were working Thursday, Friday, Saturday, some of them even came in on Sunday, and were doing those last-minute checks to try to get us up and going for this coming week. Just an incredible workforce out there in the conditions while we were home, even though we were home with no electricity. At least we weren't out on the roads, and our people were out front and center, trying to make sure that we didn't have extensive damage. And I think because of their vigilance, we avoided damage. For the community, this is not one of those pieces, you know, we don't have a newspaper out there to get this type of news out. And not that you would get it out, but, you know, just some knowledge behind the scenes. Out of our 11 campuses, facilities, six of them had pretty extensive damage that if we hadn't gotten ahead of it, we probably wouldn't be open right now. So just a huge thanks to that leadership and just the incredible work ethic from these folks. We did have a couple of injuries. Luckily, nothing serious, but it could have been. Sadly, I jinxed one of our maintenance folks that I always tease with, one of our, Thomas Brister, when we were having lunch with them on Saturday, he had been wearing a back brace sometime back from another injury at home. And when I knew that he was one of the men out there, I kept thinking, "Oh, God, please don't let Thomas slip and fall because I know he's wearing a back brace." And he had been fine. Well, I said something to that effect at the lunch, and what happened? He slipped and he fell the next day. I think he says, "Darn it, Dr. Thomas jinxed me by saying that I had not taken a fall." But, okay, so I know Todd, I'm kind of talking so that he can get it going, but we're having some technical difficulty.
It's not putting that file full up. Got our Facebook page, it's posted on there. We can watch it.
Okay, well, maybe we can get it up a little bit later, because I think that'd be a great highlight to have, especially for our people watching. Our enrollment is sitting at 85.27. I know the turnover rate, we watch that carefully. District-wide, it's at 7.5, and our teacher turnover rate is sitting right at 2.6. It hasn't moved a whole lot. This past month, we had six professional resignations. Two of those are actually retirements, so they're going to finish out the year with us, but they've already given us notice. We had 10 non-exempt resignations. We had four professional hires. Just coming up on the communication scene, we've got a table talk on Thursday, the 4th, and then we have another Head Hippo Information Hour on the 8th. I'm looking forward to that one, because we're actually going to be talking to students for that particular session. Are the table talks always going to be at 6:30?
Are the table talks always going to be at 7:30?
For now, we've got, we'll probably do one, maybe the next one, we'll do an evening one since we've done the breakfast one. We seem to have more participation in the morning than we do in the evening.
Okay, so the one on March 4th will be 7:30?
Yeah, in the morning, yes.
Social.
Virtual.
Virtual, yeah, it's virtual. I put in some, a couple of notes about some legislative updates and in your packet, if you would, take this one home with you. Raise Your Hand Texas really put out a great informational piece on the stimulus money that is coming to this, to Texas. And they really want us, and we should, really advocate with our legislators that that money come directly to schools. There's some, some great comparisons about how other states used that money to help fund their schools and how Texas just took a totally different approach. So the first $5 billion, a lot of it stayed at the state level, we're going to get another $5 billion coming to the state. And I think we just need to be aware of how that money is actually going to be distributed and really make contact with our representatives, Tal Rico and, and Schwarzenegger, our Senator, to really have that money come back directly out to the districts. We're, we're going to be looking at learning loss and how we combat that. So it's important to have those funds here locally and not at the state level.
Right, I came in from a different direction, so let's see.
Okay.
No, the sound is not working. Yeah. Yeah.
All right, folks, to everybody out there, we apologize for that technical difficulty, but really it's a, an excellent video. It's posted on our Facebook website, so really encourage you to watch it. You can even play it on the way to work tomorrow. Okay, last item on the superintendent's report. Just want to make you aware, Henry and I have initiated a collaboration with our city staff and we're just going to get together and talk about, not have a formal after action review, but really talk about the next crisis event and how we can have just stronger communication and a stronger alignment of our resources and how we can serve our, our community, just a more unified and organized fashion. And obviously the lack of power, just this event was so unusual, it really prevented us from being more of a resource. We couldn't even be a warming center or provide meals to our, our community because we just didn't have the means to do it. But I think if we can get together and start those, get those communication lines open, I think we can be better organized for the next one because it was, it's only going to be a matter of time until there's another type of event where we have to pull together as a community. So Henry and I will initiate that first one and then we'll, we'll start bringing in the rest of the community and, and other members to that, to that process. And I really want to applaud Henry and his vision for this because he's been trying to do this now for a couple of years and we, we finally have some really good response from the city and we look forward to that working relationship. Okay, so that's it for the superintendent report. The next piece is just a quick update on safety and security, which we've been doing since COVID descended upon us. And if you can go to that presentation. This one is not as lengthy as the others. Can you locate that? Okay. All right, we'll just wait just a second until you can see what we're able to see.
Works better when Robert and I work as a team.
I know. You know, you're trying to do it all from that side.
I'm on Easy Street today.
Yes, can you go to the next slide? So the county dashboard is not going to be updated until the first. The last piece of data that we have is from February the 11th, obviously pre-winter event. At that particular time, the cases were down to 28 per 100,000, which was down significantly because if you remember, the last time we met in January, we were at 57 cases per 100,000. Right now, the county is directing its efforts towards vaccinating people and we meet weekly. We'll, we'll have a meeting tomorrow at 2 o'clock to discuss those logistics. Do you have the, our list of people that meet 1A and 1B criteria? So it's just a matter of time until they get that call that they're up, that they're up next in line. And we do have some, just some data from February the 24th on the state dashboard that Williamson County is down to 915 cases. The county still has 34,000 confirmed cases since tracking. However, we know that right now that there's a lag in that reporting just because people couldn't get to testing sites and we, we don't know how many people actually isolated. We know a lot of families combined and got together just seeking shelters, water and food. So we're keeping our fingers crossed that we don't have another spike because of the winter event. Trigger points for closing, no changes with that protocol. So nothing new to report in that particular area. As far as instructional plan updates, if you can believe this, we are down to the last change request as far as in-person or virtual learning because we're down to the last reporting periods. Elementary has one more, their last data request is the 20, that's tomorrow.
It's already closing?
It's already closing. That takes effect on March 22nd, which is right after spring break. And then the secondary schools have one more change request. We don't anticipate a whole lot of changes at this juncture. And of course, the last note there, work proceeds on the new and improved version of virtual learning for 2122, possibly using a hybrid model. So once again, Dr. Sermoni and the directors and I met today, we'll have some more, hopefully some more information in the, in the weeks ahead. The next note on positive cases, this is probably the best piece of news ever. If you remember, I think back in January, we had over 100 people out with a COVID-related incident of some sort. Right now, we're down to the 20s. So as of today, at 9:15 a.m., there's five active cases, four people in isolation, 10 on quarantine. So those are just significant drops in the numbers and we hope to be able to maintain.
And this is of our staff, correct?
Right. Yes, this is just staff. Because remember, we're trying to track, I, I know you probably, what's happening with the students, I don't have that particular data, but we track this data because of our ability to, to stay open. So right now, we're sitting in really good shape. We went two days with no positive cases. This afternoon, right before our board meeting, we got notice that we had two more cases come up. Well, you, you had a good little streak there.
I think our student case was on the dashboard, I think it's four.
Four, yeah.
So it dropped down significantly too.
Significantly, yeah.
There was a silver lining last week.
Yes. Mr. Graham, do you want to say anything about the finance expenditures?
We have not received any additional funding. So I'm sorry I have to say that.
The only thing that we, we have started to do, both Caleb and, and Glenn have, have special codes for all these COVID-related expenses. And now with the winter event, they've had to start another coding system for all of those, for all of those expenses.
COVID, now snowvid.
Snowvid.
Snowvid, yes. Now, you were upset about the, the, the cost for substitutes. What number did we exceed right before the winter storm?
First time in history, $100,000 a month.
$100,000 a month for substitutes, yeah. As far as operations and safety, CDC sent new guidance to schools across the country. Kendra combed through that pretty thoroughly and really that we didn't make any changes to our safety plan. All the mitigation efforts that they're describing, we already have in place. For our rapid tests, we're going to start using those with our softball and baseball teams. And so parents and students will have the ability to test every two weeks, but I'm going to make it mandatory, just we're going to make it available for those two sports. We've got after action reviews taking place with that, with a, with a weather event and everything with PPE, supply sanitation protocols, all that remains in place. We've got plenty on hand, no one should have any type of shortages in that area. And of course, we've, we've talked about everything's back online with the recent weather event. So we still have some, some issues out there. We're going to have to replace quite a bit of carpeting and no.
There'll be some things that'll be kicked down the road to spring break or even the summer. If you've not been in Hutto High School, entire main entrance, the permanent fur down that's above the ceiling will all be torn out and it'll go all the way down the hall and we'll have to replace that. But we're not going to do that while school is still in operation. The primary goal is to dry the buildings out and dehumidify. And we have steam team working with us along with one other vendor that does this type of work. They'll, they'll use an aerosolized chemical that will prevent mold and mildew and mitigate any, any long-term damage. But there'll be some repair work off and on here and there, but we will try to stay out of, you know, any disruption to instruction until spring break or summer.
I think Elementary really had the most damage. The whole front office area was flooded. That water ran into.
Brand new library.
The brand new library, but because the shelving is on those portable, the shelving units that are portable, the water didn't get up at high, so we didn't have any, any damage to our books and hopefully.
Mainly flooring and, but it's still, the jury's still at us to whether it'll be replaced.
So the whole front office is relocated to the hallway. Oh, really, the receptionist has to sit out there to kind of watch the, the front door.
So was it a pipe bust outside?
No, inside.
All, all the leaks except for a few mechanical units were all suppression systems.
I got you.
Yep. So right now, we don't have any administrative recommendations, spectator capacity, we're going to keep it at 25% for right now. We have a review right before spring break and then obviously if our staff get that call that they're up next with a vaccine, we'll, we'll work it out somehow so they can go and get their vaccine and then hopefully be able to make it back to work. Any questions, Bob?
More, more just a, and I guess a reminder, and if this is not right, then correct me, but just the reminder to parents, if a parent is test positive, their, their kids need to stay home, right?
Yes, yes. If there is a positive case in the home, the, the, the family members, including obviously their children, should, they need to remain at home. Where it gets complicated is that the parent has to go through their 10-day cycle before the 14-day quarantine period begins for the child. And this is where our parents have a, they, and obviously I would too. What do you mean, my child is going to be out for 24 days? That's a lot. Now, if we, if we had guarantees that those children were completely isolated, but you can't in a family unit, it's very, it's very difficult. So yes, when there is a positive case in the home, that the quarantine period does not begin until that positive case, which is their 10-day mark, and then the quarantine for 14 days begins.
Yes, and that's a positive case of anyone in the home?
Anyone in the home. And if that person was exposed, if they all live under the same roof?
Yes.
You're welcome. And, and trust me, that was, that's one of the, every time we have that we review our safety protocols, that's one of the main discussion points because we know that that's, that's really one of those quarantine issues, removal from the school that really upsets our, our parents. But we've looked at the science with it. I know Kendra, when I met with her yesterday, we were looking at some of the numbers with, with regard to, to students. She just looked at some of the last data from January to February. Of the 121 kids who were in quarantine for an exposure, 61 of them developed cases and ended up being positive. That's 50%. So you, you really, because I was talking to her, because the CDC recommends that with your, with the approval of your local health authority, you can reduce that quarantine period from 14 days to 10 days. So we were talking about that, can we, should, should we cut back on that? Williamson County does not recommend it. We could do it if we wanted to, but there's just, we've had it, we have enough data showing that, that there's positive cases resulting from those exposures during that quarantine period. So I think we just need to stay the course and do what has been working for us because we have avoided a huge spread at the, from a campus level and from a classroom perspective because we've adhered to those protocols of isolation and quarantine.
So if the kids exposed or like, it's in a household, if they remove, if they separate them, is that like, could that start their 14-day quarantine?
Yes, if the, if, if there was a positive case at home and the parent sent those children to grandma's.
Themselves.
Yes, or left themselves, then that quar, and then we could start that 10-day period from that point.
It's not a set in stone. If you're in that household, you, I mean, there is some ambiguity to it.
Yes, and Kendra will work with those, with those individual, individual cases to really look at the, at the family's ability. Some families don't have that ability.
Right.
Have the ability to isolate in another location or leave the, or leave the home. Yeah. Okay, I think that's all I've got. Team, anything else that I've missed? Next up, we have the racial profiling report and Chief Edward, are you online?
I am online. Good evening, Dr. Strata Thomas.
Hi, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Board, Madam President. Todd, do you have a PowerPoint presentation to put up on the, the screen?
Do.
Fantastic. So, good evening, everybody in TV land. I'm William Edwards, your Chief of Police, and this evening we have for you the 2020 racial profiling report for the ISD Police Department. A little history on the racial profiling report, some of you may be familiar with the most recent KXAN four-part series that was just aired a week or so ago. It kind of gave light to some of the history of the racial profiling report. It first came about in the 77th Legislative Session about 20 years ago. And it imposes a few things on law enforcement agencies. It has to have a policy prohibiting racial profiling, a means of data collection, a report that's sent back to the state, and a means of complaints to be filed and for random video of officers making traffic stops. I'm reporting to the Board that we're in compliance with all of those. The report is what we're going over tonight and it's required to be given to the governing board before March 1st of each calendar year. So the primary basis of the, the racial profiling report is designed to find indicators of profiling within traffic stops. So for 2020, as you can see, the total number of traffic stops, that may be a little bit small for you. So for 2020, as you can see, the total number of traffic stops, that may be a little bit small for you. The total number of traffic stops the Hutto ISD Police Department made were 50 in total. That's fairly small in comparison to our municipal and county law enforcement agencies that we have overlapping jurisdictions with. That's because our primary goal is that of campus safety and we're primarily on campus, not on our public roadways. So the stops are broken down by location, which is the first chart there. Forty-five of the 50 stops were made on city streets and five of the 50 stops were made on private property or other locations, which would be our school campuses. The next chart below that for was race or ethnicity known prior to the stop? So 100% of the time for our 50 stops, race was unknown prior to the time of the stop. The breakdown of the race or ethnicity. There was one Alaskan Native American Indian, zero Asian Pacific Islanders, nine black, 24 white, and 16 Hispanic or Latino. Those are the five categories of which the state provides for us to break down in. When you take a look at some of the slides we'll have later when we give a analysis to where we're at with our local demographics or our US Census, sometimes it gets a little bit hard to marry up those five because you have different classifications that are considered in this report or different classifications for demographics in that area. However, the report that we send back to the state has got to have those particular five categories. The report is also broken down by gender. So of the 50 stops that the Hutto ISD Police Department made, 13 of those stops were female. Thirty-seven of those stops were male. Todd, next slide. So the reason for the stop is broken down by violations of law, pre-existing knowledge, moving traffic violations, and non-moving traffic violations. And as you'll see, there's a lot of zeros in that particular table or that graph. And all 100% or 50 of our stops line up in the moving traffic violation. The next category was, was a search conducted? And again, there's a lot of zeros in those areas for there was not a single search that was conducted pursuant to any of the stops that were made by the Hutto ISD Police Department. Again, not our primary function or motivation is traffic. It's being on our campuses and keeping our students and our staff safe. The last box on that particular slide is the reason for the stop. The reason for the search. And as you'll see, there were no searches, so there were no reasons indicated, so it's zero straight across the board. On the next slide, the first graph is, was contraband discovered? Again, there were no searches conducted, so there was no contraband discovered as well as description of contraband. The last box on that slide is the results of the stop. Out of the 50 traffic stops that were made by Hutto ISD Police Department, it resulted in a total of six traffic citations being issued and a total of 44 warnings. So with the primary goal of the racial profiling report, that of being, showing trends to indicate whether profiling is being conducted in a particular area or geographic location, we don't have to look at those trends. We can go back in and take a look at each and every one of those stops. There's only six of them to look at. And looking at the six that we had, most of them were for egregious traffic violations, passing school bus, disregarding barricade, one stop sign and one speeding violation. Next slide. The arrest based on traffic stops, again, has a lot of zeros in those boxes because out of the 50 traffic stops that were made, there were no arrests that were made and there was no searches that were conducted. And there was no force that was used in any of those traffic stops. One of the things that we've been concentrating on is increasing some of the visibility in our school zones to increase the compliance. We've currently got upgrades at the Hutto Elementary School, School Zone on Mager Lane. Those signs have been recently replaced, indicate new times to be in line with primary school times. The signs around Hutto High School have also been replaced and we've been working with the city to place traffic beacons that would indicate the yellow flashing traffic lights for school zone indicators on both Mager Lane and then three of those around Hutto High School. We're in hopes that that'll increase some of the visibility and gain some greater compliance and slowing down and being safe for our students and our staff in those areas, especially during our arrival and dismissal times. With that, I'll open it up to the board. Does anybody have any questions in reference to our racial profiling stops and report for 2020?
I've got a good, quick question. Out of these stops, are we mainly stopping students that are driving through the parking lot or is it also parents?
That's a really good question. So for, for the stops, we don't have any particular concentration that we go out and do like a standard traffic enforcement program. It's typically random violations that are observed by the officers, usually when they're in transition from one campus to another campus. The school zones are primarily monitored by Hutto Police Department. They do run standard traffic enforcement programs during the school zone times. So it's a random variety of the, the composition of those stops from residents to transient traffic and the whole gamut.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And just so the board knows, Chief and I had a conversation about this. This is one of those standard reports and normally would just be under a consent agenda item. But I think in light of the work we're doing with the RI, I thought it was important for him to present it and talk about it to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you all.
Okay, up next is Dr. Sermani.
Serious.
Serious.
I just like the fact that Todd has to be my driver for this.
I think it too.
There's a lot of stuff.
This is the CCMR one for.
Oh, okay.
That's not the one I had first.
The other one.
Informational.
Always bring it up. I'll let you know that normally at this time of year, we would bring two reports. One would be the Literacy and Numeristry Report and one would be the CCMR. Fortunately, we usually spend the week before the board meeting, prepping through and getting through all the data and talking with campuses. And of course, we were all stuck in our houses that day. So that, I didn't feel like we could get you a good product by tonight. And so we're going to do that in the first meeting in March. We'll do that quarterly report or tri-annual. We do it every three, every three times a year. So, but we did have the CCMR report done. Ms. Torres is out there and her team put this together. And so we are ready to present on this. Keep going. And of course, there's the nine ways, as always, that you get CCMR, that hasn't changed any. Before it won. Right now, you haven't seen any change in this because this is the class of 2020, which is on, would have been on this year's accountability. It's, we'll still get a report on that from the state. This numbers actually would be higher if we were allowed to count our enlisted students. But right now, they cha, TA changed the rules on that, so we don't count that number any longer. And they have to report that for us. So right now, we're projected at 81%, although we expect that to be a little bit higher by the time that's done, maybe like an 83, 84% for the class of 2020. Before, so this class of 2020, again, just kind of gives you a breakdown of students. But probably we really want to look at the class of 2021 because that's your current class, one we can impact. This number is lower than it normally is at this time of year. It's a very, most of it's COVID-related for one reason or another. So a few little items about this. And normally, this would be, probably be about 60-ish percent about right now. That number will still probably go up fairly high in the 80s, close to where we were. But it will be for a different reason than we're used to. We usually get a lot more kids that qualify as considered college-ready through norm reference tests like TSI, SAT, ACT, and a number of other ways. Because I'll talk about in just a moment, but some of the barriers that have been put in place. Most, I shouldn't say most, but a lot of our students are going to qualify CCMR from taking a college prep class this semester instead, which is great. I mean, they're taking a college class to get them ready for math or ELA. But to me, that's a little bit of a lower bar that we don't like to shoot for that. It's almost like a fallback, as I would describe it. And so to connect with you, if you go to the next slide, some of the things that have been happening. One good thing is our industry-based certifications, despite everything's going on, is actually on a trajectory that should be higher than it's ever been, at least as far as we've been tracking. So, well, I haven't been around that long. So I'm really excited about that and we've got a pretty good jump on it already. And so that's nice to see. You can see here, there's a few barriers. These are just two of the ones. And of course, that winter storm, we have a TSI test in schedule and that's gone. And so we've got to try to redo that. And there's, there's not really an incentive for a lot of students to come and get their TSI test because ACT, SAT, and TSI requirements have been waived by many colleges as far as the entry requirements. So there's, so if I'm a virtual student, I don't really have an incentive to come in. And I've got a real hard time trying to tell a kid, you've got to come in and take this test just so I can get a CCMR indicator. Now, certainly I do emphasize to parents that this is valuable, that it shows that you're college-ready. And if the college ever changes its mind two years from now and goes back and says, well, you weren't quite college-ready, you know, that protects you from that. But you know, that's pretty much all we've got as far as trying to emphasize students, they may want to get this. Especially seniors who may have already been accepted to college, they really have no real reason to come. Now, again, most of those students who didn't take a TSI and qualify in some other way, they are automatically put in a college prep class. So that's where they are right now. So many of them will get that backstop, but we usually like to hire them that. So that's the CCMR report and update for the moment. If you all have questions, future plans, or save that for another time.
I have, I guess I have a comment kind of for those that are listening. So if you have a student who's not a senior, for example, who might want to take dual credit classes, it would still behoove them to take the TSI so they could take the dual credit classes. Is that right?
That's correct. You have to pass the TSI test still to be able to get into a dual credit class while you're in high school. So any student who's interested in taking college credit courses now, so. Not to mention the fact that pandemic is going to end and that waiver is going to be gone. And it'll be back that you need to pass one of these college indicators in order to go, not to take a remedial class when you go to college.
Yep. And also, just for a note, the colleges are waiving the SAT and ACTs sometimes for admission, but a lot of scholarships are still requiring those, so keep that in mind.
Yeah. And more, just as a reminder, these, these, remember the CCMR report are important pieces of the district improvement plan, the strategic, the strategic plan, the work that we do as part of governance. I think an important piece to, not to add more work to school support, but an important piece to this data would also be to break down those CCMR indicators, not just as numbers on a holistic level, but where are the numbers by ethnicity, right? Where are our, our white students, our black students, our African-American students, our ESL students? Where are they in the attainment? And we have it, we can easily pull it up. But I think when we start looking at governance, at excellence in governance, that's, that's what we drill down to, that we ensure that we're closing achievement gaps and raising achievement for all kids.
I think something, oh, go ahead.
I agree, but I'm kind of like Dr. Sermani too. I don't want us to lose instruction time with a kid to make him take a test just to check a box.
Correct. No, and it's not just about checking a box, but it's also about making sure that all of our children are moving in the same direction.
I'll give you a good example of that because actually, actually, we do have that data.
Yes.
Bring it forward to you. And so one thing I just want you all to be proud of, over, over time, the achievement gap between different minority groups and all students have closed tremendously. I'm very proud of the team for that data. Now, there's always still work to do, but it's, it's under 10%. It's like nine, eight percentage groups now. But I will tell you, the hole that we've identified, because we do look at these things, is there is a group, a fairly specific group, students in special, with special needs, and it's not who we thought it would be, that is really just not getting CCMR indicators at all. And it's, it's not the self-contained kids and it's not the students who are full inclusion. It's the students who are partially inclusion, partially not, that are struggling to get any sort of indicator. And you know, it's kind of like, you know, we focus a lot of time on the high needs and then we have the core. But here we have this other group that's just not getting to where we want them to be. So I can tell you right now, that's, if you look at that, that's when you drill into it, that's what you're going to see and where the work is going on. And how do we reach those? And really, a lot of those dudes, we need to get them in pathways to get industry-based certifications, to get different pathways into, into the workplace or get them the accommodations that they need to be able to perform on a standardized test like the TSI. And that's something that we did a lot of work this year. I'm curious to see how that eventually play out. We found a, there is one program that whoever makes the TSI allows you to use to provide accommodations to students with disabilities on the test. And it was a real pain, but Dr. Curtis went down there and messed with it until she finally got it to work. Her and Ms. Bushong in the high school. And so I'm excited that we got to do that for the first time this year. So, so yeah, I agree with you, but definitely that does reveal where our holes are and where we want to tackle. And that's one of them that's been on our minds.
You know, back in December, we talked about the industry-based certifications and we talked about how heavy it was on the CCMAs. And now we're seeing the, the techs, you know, opportunities there. So good, good that we have that opportunity.
You'll see, obviously, they'll come in waves because there's different bodies that set when those tests come and when they take them. So you'll see them come in different waves. And actually, as you know, that for the class of 2020, we're allowed to capture those because some of them can't take it until after they graduate. And so they'll be taking tests all the way through October, where we'll be tracking that. But it's been, I've been proud of that work that Mr. Clark and the whole CTE team have done in getting more and more students. In fact, more students earlier even getting IBCs. Ms. Feller, she's out there, she got a bunch of kids early on, said, why not take the, take the certification test? A lot of past juniors and sophomores. They're already on their way.
Well, I think this is important information and I, and what I love about kind of how forward-thinking you are, Dr. Sermani, is that we're taking those extra steps to talk to the kids about maybe what their experience was and did we provide the right opportunities for them? Nobody told us to do that, but that's what's right for kids. And so I think this information paired with the students sharing what their experiences are, are they even in those fields that they thought that they might go into with those certifications? I think those are really important connection pieces that we're making to give students that premier experience for public education. So kudos to all of you for doing that work.
Yep.
Anything else?
I'm going to go put my jacket back on.
Thank you, Dr. Sermani.
And then it looks like Mr. Gideon, just information. So unless anybody had a question for him about any of that.
A little detail, a little more detail about the different building system failures that we are tackling. So y'all will have it in case you get asked questions about your voters.
Thank you for sharing that. Okay, Mr. Graham.
Good evening, Madam President, Board members, Dr. Thomas. Tonight, I will be presenting to you the financial report as January 31st of 2021. As usual, we'll start with the income statements for the general fund. As of January 31st, we have revenues of $63.9, which represents 75% of our budget. One, three. So right now, we have an operating surplus of $22.6 million. We want to point out that we have collected 98.5% of our tax collections from that first line. So we're on track. You know, again, we, there were some concerns at the beginning of the year, what would COVID do with tax collections? And it looks like we're on pace, as in previous years. Also, other local and immediate sources. Todd, if you want to go back one more, is that 118%? Again, that's because that's where we put our COVID reimbursements. So even though we've been lacking dearly on a lot of our other revenues, such as interest income and gate receipts and things like that, we've exceeded what we budgeted because of COVID reimbursement. Again, state revenues are, I mentioned in my Friday report last week that the state adjusted their revenue projections on what we get and basically because the comptroller finally certified our values and it was higher than what they were calculating. I, I estimated that. I knew that was coming, I knew we were being overpaid. But they also do not have our up-to-date student numbers. They're going based on their guesses from last year and their, their estimations are a little low on students. And their, their estimations are a little low on students. So as soon as they get those updates from our PMS numbers, then they'll raise those estimates again. So, but we are, we are still on budget as far as studying for now, from, from the information I'm getting from our PMS data.
And that number still comes from snapshot date?
That's correct. Expenditures are in line, actually lower than usual. A lot of that has to do with, to be honest, with a lot of payroll. And we do this every year. We have a lot of payroll numbers funds remaining at the end of the year because of turnover. Every time there's turnover, usually at a minimum, there's a two-week gap in which we're not paying anyone for that position. Now, a lot of times that two-week stretches into a lot longer if we don't have good candidates and just filling those positions lag. So a lot of it has to do with that. A lot of it has to do with transportation. Obviously, we're not doing a lot of field trips this year. We're not doing a lot of travel to anywhere, especially staff. And so we're, we're saving a lot of money on transportation. So it's kind of offsetting a lot of those COVID costs that we've had. And so expenditures are staying pretty much in check for now. That'll change a little bit once our, our snow vid expenditure starts hitting. But again, we, we will get insurance reimbursements for, for that and also apply for some fee for reimbursement. We'll go to debt service next slide, Todd, please. Oh, I'm sorry. This is detail and these are expenditures. And you can see if you go in and you look at this report, next slide, Todd, I, or separate, like, here's where travel comes out of. Function 11, object code 64, that's where travel comes out. So you can see we've only spent 11% of that so far. So you can see where there's, some of these categories are way above budget and some are way below. But again, we budgeted this year based on a normal non-COVID year. And, and so that's why some of those are a lot lower than normal and some are a lot higher than others. We'll go to the debt service. Next slide. Okay, debt service fund. We made our second annual debt service payment in January. It's due February 1st, but we always do it a week early to make sure that we don't incur penalties on a late payment. And also, just like you would on your mortgage, you get bad credit ratings if you make late, late payments. So we make a payment at the end of January for our February 1st, second mortgage payment, so to speak. And that's, it's reflected here. One thing I'll do, want to point out, state, TEA sent us $273,000 for EDA and IFA allotments. We do not qualify for those. But those payments were sent prior to them getting our new property values. Since our property values are so high, that's why we don't qualify for those payments. So by the time at the end of the year, on that settlement, settlement date, that money will go away. So even though we're showing 144,000 in surplus, we're actually about 200,000 in a deficit right now. Our budget is 71,000, but by the time we get through collecting taxes by the end of the year, we, we shouldn't see a deficit in the debt service fund. A lot of that has to do with refunding. We'll go on to food service. Food service again is running a deficit. One thing I do want to point out here, there was a little over $100,000 in, in claim reimbursements for January that were delayed. So you can reduce this deficit by a little over 100,000. So we're right at $300,000 deficit, which compared to a lot of other districts is doing pretty well. Again, a lot of that is because we have reduced a lot of our operating cost in food service. Obviously, we don't have the revenues, but we've also kept in check our expenditures. Any questions on these three funds before we move on? Okay. Narrative, again, just basically reiterating what I've just stated. Todd, if you want to go to the next one, investment report, just want to point out on the Federal Open Market Committee, even though the feds have said they're going to keep the rates low, interest rates are popping and they're coming up and up. It's good and bad news for us. Good news is, good thing we sold bonds a month ago or six weeks ago and we locked into that lower rate. We will most likely start earning a little more interest on our money, but we also have a refinancing coming up in about a month. And hopefully, these rates will, will either level off or and that the benchmark T bill rate went up about 50 basis points today. That's why the stock market crashed. And so hopefully they'll stay in check or, or get a little bit lower when we do the refinancing. We'll come to you next month with that. Again, depending on that rate, on whether or not we actually will refinance. It's no different than your mortgage. There, there's a point where it gets where it's not advantageous to do so. Right now, we're still good and we're still planning on doing the refinancing. But if the interest rate keeps jumping like it does for the next month, we may change our mind.
So TCG, we're actually having to pay them to keep our money?
Oh, no. Okay. I'm glad you came up with that. If you, if, I'll show you. We'll go to the slides in a minute when we get to that.
You're jumping ahead. Oh, did you jump ahead?
We'll go to tax collections again, a little higher this year than last, basically because property values.
Wait a minute.
Okay.
It's, is it backwards?
Yeah.
Home switch?
But it was backwards.
Okay, that's, okay, okay.
That your chart is.
That scared me. Really, uh. Okay.
Sorry, I corrected that. Oh, I know why I did. Okay. Nevermind. Usually what I do is copy and paste these reports. I don't have to regenerate. I just go in and change. Well, I went to November's because January's narrative has the capital appreciation. I went two months back and forgot. So I'm sorry about that.
Hey Glenn, do we still anticipate over 100% collection?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
So reference to Mr. Batwell's question on TCG, you see an interest of negative 7,000. Those are actual long-term investments. And so that's the value of the investment every month. By the time it matures, it will be positive. So that value has gone down this month. We are guaranteed a
Gotcha.
And, and a, a gain on that investment. It's just if we sold it today, we would lose on that.
Gotcha.
So we've got it locked in. Those are some funds that we stared, stared out that we knew we didn't need to touch. And so we go out for a longer yield. If we sold them at before maturity, we would lose money on that investment. So what shows is the current value as of today.
I got you.
All right, tax collection report. Again, just a little detail, we collected 13 million in current taxes in for the month of January. So again, we're at 96.6% of our little adjusted roll.
Where does that 15 million 405 come from as uncollected?
Those are delinquent taxes. Those are from previous years.
Okay.
So there's all, even though, I mean, some of these might be from 15 years ago. So it's everything that's, if you go to the next slide, Todd. So you can see, it goes all the way back to 2002, 3, 4. If you come over here, we still need to collect $694 from prior to 2001.
Any concern in your opinion from thinking forward with COVID with what we're living through right now, that those tax rolls are going to be a little bit more in a deficit?
I haven't seen any indications. Kind of, I mean, our current role, our current collections, we're at 96%, 96.6. And that's usually what we are. These delinquents in here, that's the pretty, pretty normal. We're pretty much right where we usually always are from year to year. So again, we still have $92,000 to collect from last year, but our, our delinquent tax attorneys, we have a fund that can, they continuously work on that. And you will see where, if you look here, these are our delinquent collections for the month, 7,000. So in this delinquent column and in the rollback column, the rollback column is actually monies we received from land that went from ag to residential or ag to commercial or at some sort of value change. And when that happens, as, as if I go out and, and I buy some ag land and I turn it to commercial, by law, right now, current law, they're talking about changing this, I have to go back for three years and pay commercial on ag land for three years. So that's what the rollback means. And so that's the collections that they, they get on monthly, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
But Glenn, when a property is sold, we get to collect the delinquent taxes, right? Before an owner will cash in on their.
Yeah, there, there's any delinquent taxes up for sale. It's got a lien on it. So that lien has to be met before ownership can change.
With a lot of the forbearance coming up this year, that's going to be probably a big issue. Yeah. But you know, I, I can remember the, the bust, the housing market bust, and we still really collected fairly well. Okay. I don't know why. This is California.
They, you know, I mean, you don't hear of a lot of people going to jail over it.
Right.
Your land's locked.
Yeah.
And it's, it's theoretically a property of the government and you know, you can
So you pay for it.
Live on it. You can still accrue interest and penalty. But if you ever want to sell it, well, that's, the buyer either has to decide they're going to pay those delinquent taxes or not.
Thank you, sir.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Okay, next up is the consent agenda. Just let me know when you're ready.
New thing is to stare at you when I'm ready. Since we don't have our hippos.
No, I'm not now because I lost my spot. Ahead of the agenda.
I'm ready. Is there a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Ms. Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Mr. Batwell. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. And so the next item, the action item, we are going to make, I'm going to make a motion to postpone that until the March meeting. That is not ready, quite ready yet.
11A.
Yes, 11A. So I made the motion. Is there a second?
Oh, I'll second, sorry.
Okay. Any questions, discussion, all in favor? Okay, motion passes. We'll bring that back in March. So you guys know, we've talked about like our topics each month. And several of us had attended the XG Summit back in, I think, November, December. And one of the things we got from that was the book, The Governance Core. And so what we wanted to do is rather than do our monthly Lone Star reading, which by the way, this magazine is really good. If you guys are getting this, there's a lot of good information in these magazines. But what we wanted to do is go through this book together and really like identify what good governance is, what being a premier school board looks like and just how, how this book could guide us and help us through that. So this is what we'll talk about each month moving forward. And I guess one of the questions is, do we want to keep this on this main meeting on the fourth Thursday of the month? Or do we want to move this to our second Thursday meeting of the month, if that makes more sense?
What is the breakdown? I can't remember. The first meeting is, the first meeting of the month is going to be?
Presentations, workshop style. We'll get, we'll get the presentations at that meeting and ask questions. There will be no action taken at those meetings.
That's probably, that's probably a good time to do this.
So we could do this on the second rather than the fourth. So one of the things that, and, and really we want to stay focused on our discussion with this book, right? You know, and so if you guys, I believe Dr. Thomas shared with all of us the, the Google Doc worksheet, right? Did you share it with everyone?
Yes. And I just reshared it again. So if you go to your if you go to your mail, should be up at the very top. So I created a book study form for this governance core. And if you'll go there, I think we can talk about the organization of this. This is just a suggestion for how we can approach this. And notice I only did three tabs in case we wanted to change the format. So if you'll open it, I don't see any faces. I'll wait for you all. So.
Using her teacher voice. I will wait. Logging in, ma'am.
Okay.
So I need access. It's because I'm not signed in as the right person to do that.
I see Edgar and I see Linda. Hey, ELT, I just sending it to you also so you can see what we're doing. Because I know you all love book studies.
I can critique our answers.
For example, the presenter for our introduction is Billy. So the column headings are the presenter who can decide on a thought question or a problem statement from the reading. And then as you scroll over to the right side, you, you see all of our names. And all of those spaces, there's a response. There's a column for the response to the thought question or the problem statement. Then there's a column for wondering. So if there's something that you're just, you know, you, you have a question about, something that made you wonder. And then the last column E is about a probable action as a result of learning. Do we want to change our board operating procedures? Do we want to offer a suggestion? What kind of is, sometimes there'll be action, sometimes there won't be action, but just an opportunity to kind of change practice as a result of the learning. So Billy took the liberty since this was the, the first one. She created a thought question for us.
So our task before tonight was to read, just to read the introduction part, if you guys were able to do that. And that's where the, the thought comes from.
That was my favorite part of it too, is that little
Mine too.
That little box.
Yeah, that's where I put most of my notes, in that box.
Oh, the, I'm referring to. So that's it. According to the text, there were the negative drivers and then there was the positive drivers. So it seems like to me, we kind of live in the negative driver box. So how do we transition as a board over to the positive? And, and do you guys agree that we live in that negative?
I think we have the ability to dive down there.
Yeah. And we usually do.
I think sometimes the structure of the meetings elicits some of the things here on the negative side. And Billy and I were talking about is
Wait, 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 run that by me again. I'll make sure I get that right.
I think the structure of the way the meetings are set up can elicit some of the things on the left side.
Is that because you think we, we want to know about the things that are causing us problems?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got you. I just want to make sure I understood what you were saying. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Morgan.
That's okay. I was going to say Billy and I were actually talking about the, the readings today because I, I read mine a little bit later and I was debriefing with her. And one of the things I, I thought was really powerful to me is the And one of the things I, I thought was really powerful to me is the idea of, I think sometimes we get so much information about like where your role is and avoid micromanaging. And so I think that a lot of times, at least for me, I, I feel like I don't always know where that line or that lane is. And so the fact that, that I feel like this book is taking us is to really get more global perspective, but spending time together to share ideas. So when we get stuck on a really hard thing, like maybe there's not consensus on, we have all those relationship pieces in place where we can get over those hard things together and see the big picture on those items. So.
And it's like this sentence on, on page eight, it says, "A shift to the positive drivers represents a change in culture, mindset, and behavior." So are we willing as a group, you know, to consider a change in culture, mindset, and our behavior as it relates to, you know, meetings and, and the work of the board? Because if the answer is no, then we could just put this book
What are we doing reading? I mean, I think that's something we can strive for, right?
Right.
Yes.
I, I kind of made a few notes as I was reading through this and tried to connect a few dots. The first thing that really stood out to me was a whole notion on page two of sentences, strangely, they get little help in defining fulfilling this role.
Highlighted that too.
I did too.
More trustees. And you know, that, the way that ties to page three, where it talks about the, kind of what becomes the default position of the board and superintendent relations. And the irony down there, this reminded me of the whole notion of fake it till you make it, which is a totally erroneous thing in my opinion, but my board is great. They leave me alone and do my job. That's not a good board.
Right.
Right. A good board defers that authority wholly to the superintendent. Leaving them alone to do their job is a whole diff, it's almost dismiss, it's almost
Dismissive.
Dismissive, not deferential. And there's a difference, right? And then on page nine, when they're talking about the difference between the, the negative drivers and the positive drivers, I think I was able to kind of look at both areas and say, we, we hit on both of those in some cases. But me, the whole notion of coherence versus alignment really struck a chord. Right? And the difference between one being subjective, one objective, one emotional, one, right? So it, it, I think that is closely related to the drivers. And, and the whole idea of something being coherent does not mean that it's aligned. And identifying the difference between the two can only lend itself to governance and effective governance. That is, that whole section right there on page nine, in the right in the middle is what really struck a chord with me. Because again, the negative drivers and the positive drivers, in my opinion, I was kind of, I was kind of toggling back and forth, like we're
We do that.
We do that. We do that. You know, we're kind of in both columns in my opinion. So.
So what you're saying, I'm struggling with the coherence, the, you're saying that we, we don't all have to think the same way. Is that what you, I mean, the coherence and alignment deal?
A coherent board can be, can agree and they can be following a direction, but it's largely based on emotion and subjective criteria.
Right.
Versus a strategically aligned board who may not always agree. This is how I'm interpreting this.
Okay.
Who may not always agree, but they're, they're strategically, not tactically, strategically moving towards the same goal in the same direction. So for example, here in a nutshell, alignment is rational while coherence is emotional. Right? That's, that's really the one that for me
I got you.
Struck, really rang true there.
Even if you keep on reading down Edgar on that paragraph.
Yeah, I'll read it. And the, the last sentence here is, is really critical because it ties it all together. "To reach a shared depth of understanding, people must interact on a continuous basis, sorting out their differences and coming to a common understanding that guides and reflects action." This is really, this last sentence is everything. It is this emotional commitment that leads to success.
Which goes back to really what Morgan was saying, talking about too, when we spend time together and when we hash out things together.
Yeah.
You know, that, that's
Yeah.
What you just said.
So I, I really, really enjoyed the introduction. I thought it was a lot of really good material there and see where the book is going. And I think it's a great read.
I love the, on page 10 too, the first, or chugging a few fundamental characteristics at stake for effective governing. The first is that school board members and superintendents must continually develop a governance mindset individually and together to become a unifying force for fulfilling the moral imperative of raising the bar and closing the gap for all students. Which if, you know, we drill it down.
That's why we're here.
At the end of the day, that's what we're here for.
Today.
And I, and I think that we've had some really great conversations this, this group has, this board has recently about, you know, board purview, interaction with our leadership team and our superintendent. And I think we're, you know, having those conversations only helps clarify what our mutual expectations are. You know, between the board and the superintendent and the leadership team. And you know, I, I think that having those discussions openly and really not necessarily codifying, but being, providing uniformity and clarity as to what it is, what it is that we can do above and beyond the definition of governance, right? We can, governance is black and white. We can read it and go, okay, know what governance is. But above and beyond governance, what is it that we can do as a board to strengthen and augment what leadership is doing without inadvertently toeing into those waters, right? Where it's, it's kind of like, yeah, that's a little much. And that's a moving target. That's the thing, that's the whole, that's the whole point, I'm sure will be one of the points of this book is that's largely defined by that unit, right? By that team of eight, right? It's, some superintendents want more of that and some definitely want less of that. And, and regardless of what the definition of it is, it's, it really comes down to that individual team dynamic. How much do you want us to be, you know, involved in that? And I think having those discussions is very healthy. And, and I think this would be a great guide for it. I really do.
Well, I appreciate you guys humoring me and taking this and doing it. Because I think it's going to be good.
I, I think we've talked about multiple times that we want to be that exceptional board. And I think this is one way that we do that because I think another thread that I took out of this was there's a difference between having great ideas and actually putting those things into action. And so to me, this is a prime example. We've said that we want to become a premier board. And this is an activity that will help us start being reflective and, and the quote here on page 10, to interact with purpose. I think everything we have to do has to be intentional. And so this is an example of that.
I'm reminded of the conversation that we had in closed session of the discussions of the ninth grade center. How we had a lot of different opinions of, you know, what's the best thing, what's, what's going to happen there? What are the plans? What are the costs? And very open discussing solution-minded options. Very helpful.
I was just going to say, it's just exceptional that you're even having the conversation. And so I think that's fantastic. As somebody who went through a doctoral program and studied board governance, the fact that you all even having this conversation is really impressive. Boards just don't do that generally, except exceptional boards. So.
That's what we want to be. I just think we really need to focus on raising the bar and closing the gap for all students, meaning the needs of every student. How do I see? So like that little group that you talked about, that you learned about, that's what I'm like super interested in. I want to make sure those kids are being successful. So whatever we can do to facilitate discussion and governance to make sure that that happens, I think that's what we need to be focused on.
Keep pointing back to those things that we
I want to know more about. Who are those kids?
Yes.
What are we doing? You know?
And that's what diving into the data does for you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right. It reveals those patterns and those inequities. And once it stares you, stares at you in the face, all right, what are we going to do about this?
Right.
What's the next?
So the idea would be moving forward that pick, maybe one of you guys will volunteer for chapter one to be the, the person who comes up with the thought or the question. But for the rest of us, you know, during, as you're reading, whenever you have that, you're picking yourself?
Oh, it's nose ghost.
Oh, I'll go, I'll go next.
No, Philip has to go and then Edgar, because then they're going to be gone.
Oh, right.
Our chain.
That's true. We don't want to miss out on their
Right.
Their wisdom.
I can stall long enough.
So you want to do chapter one?
Something like that. Yeah, I'll do chapter one.
Hey, look, Connie's online. She can do chapter.
Connie, you just
Yeah, there she is. There's Connie, our facilitator.
So for the rest of us, while you're reading and going through it, at any time, you can fill in the other spots on that, on that Google Doc. The response or wonderings or, you know, fill, fill in your notes there.
So, so we'll do yours. March? I mean, is that the next meeting we're doing, chapter one?
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll do yours and then I'll, under week one, I'll go ahead and, what, right?
No, we've kind of, well, without, without filling in, because you didn't know that this, we hadn't talked about how to use that form. I would say we've already done intro.
Okay.
If you want to fill in your stuff right there, feel free to.
But the expectation moving forward is that we would have that filled out before we
Before we come here. Yes.
Got you. So not only we have to read, we have to
You also have to write like the kids do, Philip. By the next meeting, as in like next week.
March.
It's in two weeks.
Two weeks.
So March 11th.
Okay, so Edgar, you've got to put the question on there for us.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll read this weekend. Put it up.
Okay.
Okay. And if you, if you want to put in two thought questions or problem statements, that's, that's or just one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Something else.
Okay. Anything else about the introduction? There's some good stuff there. So then the board calendar.
Oh, do you need the?
Yes, if you have yours.
Will you give it to Linda?
Do we put our name on it? We put our
But if you need a folder, we, you just need to have it in a folder. You can put it in both. Yeah.
Alright, so we're going to mail these to David Kemble and he's going to tally them and do the analysis and then come and meet with us. So we may miss him obviously for the 11th. It won't give him enough time to receive them and analyze them. So I may have him maybe report on the first April if he's ready.
Okay. And that's another step towards exceptional governance, right? That's our board evaluation that we're doing.
That we've been saying we wanted to do. So we
Yes.
Okay. So Saturday, whoever can make it to the gala, the chamber gala. Forward to that. And then if you didn't hear, did everybody hear about the books? These books are like, we were giving them to the campus that it's on. So if you want to just jot a little note inside the cover and sign it. And then we can give those back to the campuses.
And if you want to dedicate, sign it and put
Did you sign?
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be there forever and ever.
I'm okay. I don't have my name in it. I just wanted to have it.
And then
We added
Who had
Note to add the stuff about the ninth grade center.
I wrote that down. And who had Cottonwood Creek for the campus showcase?
Maybe me.
Be assigned these?
I think it was before you guys came.
Oh, yeah.
Was, was it the, the, do you remember Linda?
My things at home.
Who had Cottonwood Creek?
I had Ray and
Coming up and Farley's that was rescheduled is coming up.
And I tell you what, we, you can open anybody who's available and wants to come. You're welcome.
Okay.
And just like, if you haven't come to a showcase yet, I went to Ray's and it was amazing. You get a campus tour. The campus did like a showcase of each of their special student groups. It's really exciting to see kind of that, that work in action.
And they love to get to show it off to us.
I have it on my calendar.
So we've got two things for future agendas.
All right, Connie just said now she's going to watch just to make sure I do my chapter.
All right. So I have a surprise for you guys. It's 9:12 and we are going to
I'm making my journey.
A second.
I thought you were supposed
By Mr. Battwell and second by Ms. Hubbard. So all in favor?
Good work tonight, guys.
You said we're going to, I almost went
And the team for all that work.